Begin by stating that the meeting is being recorded by the recording clerk via Zoom in the event that the connection is lost at any time during the meeting and a device is being used by the recording clerk for the purpose of taking minutes. Is there anyone else who wishes to record the meeting? Dick, you've asked, right?
Yes.
Absolutely, no problem, thank you. Anyone else?
Okay.
Hearing, no one else? The other thing which, Deb, we might just put this in the announcements going forward, a polite request for, and this is particularly when we have an even broader attended meeting, ask those who are listening but not recognized to speak, if you'd be kind enough to put your phones on mute. Marshall's dog was trying to get into the meeting last time we checked.
She was not recognized as a speaker, but she decided to have her way.
Yes, I was gonna say, he was barking up the wrong tree, so to speak. So, with that, that is the one announcement that I have. We have select board minutes from August 24th. Lynn, would you care to lead us in this, please?
Thank you. Motion to approve the minutes of select board meeting held Monday, August 24th, 2020, as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion?
Debbie, did you get the comments that I sent in a couple of hours ago?
I got the comments, I was just verifying them, but it is, that is the version that is up on Board Docs.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Ms. Bermidas?
Aye.
Mr. Spencer?
Aye.
Passed unanimously, thank you very much. I'm adjusting screen sizes so I can see everybody while I look at the agendas. There we go. Next, we go on to Traffic Advisory Committee. We did start a conversation about this and we are going to continue with the, we hope we reach a point where we're comfortable making a motion and approving the charge of the Traffic Advisory Committee. But Kevin, I don't know if I should turn this over to you or to you, Neil. Who's gonna talk first?
Mr. Chairman, I'll lead off and then hand it over to the chief to elaborate on some of these. So, just to recap, we, Chief Hubby and I had some conversations a few months ago about traffic advisory, knowing that we've been seeing a lot of neighborhoods reaching out with concerns around traffic, looking to provide a little more robust support when it comes to identifying possible solutions to troubled areas. And so, Chief Hubby did a fantastic job in putting together our thoughts in a proposal for a traffic advisory committee. In it, it contemplates a number of details around what the charter will be, the makeup of it, and really all the different components associated with what we think would be appropriate for our traffic advisory committee. We talked about this a few weeks ago, our last meeting, our last work session meeting, actually it was back in August, and wanted to bring it back up. There's a few items on here that we redlined as well, and wanted to obviously get the select board's input and hopefully more clarity on the direction we're heading and the direction you'd like us to head in. And when it becomes ready for a vote, we'd love for the board to take it up. So, I'll stop talking. Chief Hubby, do you have anything that you want to add to that?
I'm just, I'm really looking for a very transparent process and I want as many people involved, all the stakeholders to have to say, I think it's really important that the select board is very well informed to make educated decisions based upon our stakeholders within the community and all the department heads that are intricately involved with traffic patterns and emergency settings. We're looking for a good quality of life as well as a public safety for all of our residents. So, I didn't want this just one dimensional. I felt like it was always the highway superintendent and the chief of police making these decisions or making these recommendations. I really think that we need a more consistent and transparent process to get a lot, a lot more people involved. So, you know, since I took over, I have 11 street projects that I'm working on with complaints from neighbors or the residents of a, a single resident complaining about a stop sign. We've done a big evaluation of our signage in the town. We've identified that there's signages that are up that have never been approved by the select board and that just causes a lot of concerns going forward. So, we really are looking at this as a whole, big project for making sure our street signs and our signages are brought to the board's attention for them to vote on appropriately and to make sure that every sign is in the right, right spot. So, we have a, our bylaws are pretty strict enforcement of how they're laid out on stop signs, yield signs, speed signs, where they're specifically supposed to be located. And so, we are evaluating every single aspect of this. So, I want to thank the town administrator that he spent two hours with Superintendent Wiles and myself, driving around town, intricately looking at these intersections, and it's very time consuming.
It's a little crazy.
It needs to be that detailed.
I spent over 10 hours and I don't have a camera. How am I supposed to do Zoom meetings?
Excuse me, could everybody who is not speaking, please put on their mute button so there's no disruption? Thank you.
So, we can, we can present a whole comprehensive, you know, project back to the select board for everybody to make the best informed decision and have it transparent. So, thank you.
So, Neil, tell me, since you became police chief, all of a sudden, a lot of people decided to make phone calls to you and appeal to you to do various traffic things that we have not had an issue with in the past?
Well, I can't speak on the past, Mr. Gant. All I can speak is that in my short five months, you know, I've had residents reach out to me. I think I'm pretty transparent. I, I want people, we changed our website, I think it's more accessible. People are reaching out to me through either email or the phone call. We've had three community meetings already with residents. Our last one, we had 26 residents of one street attend the meeting to have discussions. You know, we have one street in town, it's been a 29-year problem, and they were frustrated, but they were really excited about the approach that we are taking. We made no guarantees, but again, there are, there are intersections in this town that have grave concerns that need to be, need to be addressed. But people are reaching out.
If I could actually follow up to, it is the outreach. You know, one of the things that we, Chief and I have talked about and really all the department heads, is making sure that we're as responsive as possible when there's a concern that's raised. And so, we've, we've organized a process basically where if there's, there's a complaint, we want to make sure everyone who's involved is part of the conversation. So, those are the community meetings that the chief, but I'll also say from the town administrator's office, we do receive calls as well, and it's a way to ensure that the town administrator's office isn't working on one thing, the chief's working on the same thing, or a very close similar thing. This allows us to have a lot of collaboration and efficiency when we go about dealing with similar, same issues that we're hearing about.
Is anybody like to make a motion or are there further questions?
I'm sorry, Dick. I'd just like to make a comment about the fact that, the fact that there seems to be people coming out of the woodwork addressing Kevin and Neil, I think is all part of the process that we started when we hired Kevin as town administrator and we appointed a police chief that is totally involved. And there's hardly a person that I talked to around town that isn't pleased with the team that has been put together and the things that are happening. So, I think there's a lot of people that are recognizing that by golly, there are some people around here that'll do something. So, so I, I think that's a credit to the, the whole team and, and I believe it can only get better from here. And Chief, I agree with you totally about the fact that we've needed more than two people on the Traffic Advisory Committee for some time, and so I'm totally in favor of moving forward with it.
Thank you.
We'd say that there were just some latent issues that were able to come out since you become chief. Perhaps they were there before, but they weren't as obvious. As you said, some of them, one of them was at 29 years or something, or several years, a number of years that they were there. So, you're addressing those, that's great. Can we speak?
I think there's, 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 there's a reality that unfair or not, there were dramatic changes or very visible changes made to Pine Street, and I think there were a lot of people in town who were caught off guard by them. And so, I think that that is kind of, a lot of these people on these streets who thought, well, there's nothing that I can do or nothing that can be done. Something got done for, for one group, and so I think that people are now raising their hands again when maybe they had stopped for.
That's a good point, Marshall. It became a catalyst for bringing forward some latent issues that people may have had otherwise, yes. I'm almost disgusted with this document though now, if it's, go ahead on the document.
Yeah, I'd like his motion first and a second, then we will talk about that and make adjustments as necessary, or at least answer those questions.
Motion to approve the charge of the Traffic Advisory Committee dated 9/11/2020.
Your second?
I'll second.
So, we have a first and a second. Dick, you had some questions.
So, I have a number of suggestions as far as the, the text of it, and again, we're looking at the one that is marked up from the first time we saw it, but let me go to that first paragraph. I think it, just the wording is, is, I think, a little bit backwards where it talks about the ways. It, it talks about within the boundaries and the ways of Topsfield. The boundaries of Topsfield sets it, but on the other hand, at before that, to read correctly, I believe it would say, near the end of the second line, "with respect to the use of," there are the words, "public ways by motor vehicles, pedestrians, and cyclists within the boundaries of the town of Topsfield."
Dick, can I ask a question?
The point is, it's, it's the use of public ways, it's not the use of vehicles and it's the use of public vehicles by, use of public ways by vehicles, pedestrians, and cyclists.
Dick, can I ask a question, please? Dick, can I ask a question? This was part of a previous meeting without Kevin's markups and so on, and you had a chance to look at it and comment then. Did you pass in any comments at that time? Because I really don't want to be editing this document at this point. It's not worth everybody's time to do that if we're picking over small things. I'd rather put it off if we had to.
Okay, well, one of the things I did speak of, and this is a little bit of a concept thing and it's, it's, it's in my, it's in my comment. So, you asked if I did, and I did.
Yep.
I indicated a concern about including traffic speed in this traffic advise, in this advisory committee. The, the speed is an issue that the police department deals with, and if there's any enforcement, it's done by the police department, and it's not part of what a traffic advisory committee might do. Now, the, the committee might be looking at issues of speeding, which would indicate that perhaps we have to ask for a different speed on a particular street or whatever, but the wording that suggests that the traffic committee will be responsible for speeds in general is, I think, inappropriate. So, I, I had some changes in that area, but that was the one that I had brought up. The, the other changes that I have, textual changes, I think are an attempt to improve it. We can perhaps put it off, but I think it's, we can put off the, the final approval of this after we do this, but I think it's worth some discussion, some of the thoughts that I have.
I guess the concerns that I have, Dick, is that, you know, our process on this is to hand this out in advance, is indeed, you note on the agenda, this is a continuation of a discussion, and I'm just a little concerned that having had this for a bit of part of a couple of weeks, that now we're sort of trying to go through line by line, which seems inappropriate. My inclination on one hand is to ask a sense of the board if we vote on it as is, or should we just go ahead this time, take it off, put in all your suggestions to Debbie and Kevin, and let's bring it back as a baked document instead of just a half-baked one. So, let me ask a sense of the board.
John, the objective here is, it's a working session and we have a responsibility to deliberate in public, and so.
I'm not asking for deliberation. You have a lot of suggestions, I'd rather have them here for us to look at. You know, many times when you.
I can bring them up on the screen if you'd like.
We accept them wholesale and it saves a lot of time, and I'd rather, if there are a lot of little changes, you negotiate those offline, because when we come together, nine times out of 10, Dick, we just approve them because you do have good ideas, but I don't want to spend three quarters of an hour trying to go through this line by line at this moment.
Okay. Could, could, my suggestion is in that we put it off, but I would like to discuss two areas, as, so not, not the detailed wording of it, but rather the, the concepts in it.
Okay, so the speeding is one thing you've mentioned.
Okay, yes. So, let me go down to, it says the separate, two sentence paragraph about acceptance of information. The committee will only accept written requests, et cetera, et cetera. I, I think it's appropriate to put something about the form that we'd like to have input and such, but I believe that that input could, is not limited to, I would take the word "only" out for example, but I think more importantly, it's the, if, if one of us as a selectman, select member, gets a call from somebody about an issue, that's all right, we're allowed, we are the board, we're allowed to respond to it without, quote, requiring it to go through the town administrator in a written format and whatever. Actually, the wording in here, I think, is a little backwards, because it says the committee will accept only addressed to. If it's addressed to somebody else, then the committee's not accepting it, it's whoever accepted it. But I think that whole general concept of what we get, we, perhaps we are encouraging it to be in writing, but I don't think words like "only" in that. So, that's one area that I would seek to, some, some changes in.
Right, and Dick, I'd like to say on that, I think removing the word "only," I don't see as a particular issue. I would like to state, though, that I think it's an important aspect of us in the role of select board members, that we not be bugging the, this is an administrative matter, and we're looking to set up an administrative process to deal with issues with other departments. I'm, I just want to be concerned that this is not something I feel the select board should take to the town administrator and the chief directly, other than saying, so-and-so has established a complaint on this and I would appreciate it if you'd look, you'd get in touch with them. Kevin has quite a record of calling people directly on things, but I think the idea of saying that select board members can bring it directly, I think we would have to put it in writing as well, because when things are in writing, it's very clear what the specific request is, where, and it's done verbally, sometimes it ends up being confused. Kevin, you have something?
I was just gonna say exactly that. I think the, the purpose of this is to just make sure it's a consistent process to have the board take it up, right? So, we might have somebody who says, "I saw someone drive by my house fast today." That might be simply a conversation with the police chief that can be referred over. Around, like what we've seen recently, where there's a number of residents who've expressed concerns about the type of vehicles, the volume of vehicles, the speed of vehicles, and the safety of people who might be pedestrians or other on that street. You know, that might be something where it would come to the committee and then action taken on it. So, I think there's a, to your point, Mr. Chairman, and I think, Mr. Gant, you're right there too, is, we just gotta make sure there's a process that's consistent and whatever that might look like. And I don't mind having, if there's a, an issue that comes to a select board member, having that request be asked, you know, it might be addressed by you, a conversation, just say if you'd like to put that in an email to the town administrator, and then we can take a look at it. We, the select board member who's brought it to us, we can have a conversation about what they think, and then put it on the next agenda for one of these meetings that way. That, that said, we could certainly take it and say, you know, your request through the select board or the town administrator, you know, there's certainly flexibility on that, but I think the important part of this is making sure that there's a consistent way of getting onto the agenda, and that there's a sort of a, an initial check to make sure that it's an appropriate type of, to appropriate for the meeting's agenda. You know, so.
And the second, the second area that I want to discuss with that of the makeup, usually with committees, you gotta be careful how big you make them. The bigger they get, perhaps the less effective they are, not necessarily, but often that's the case. And so, with, with that said, first of all, I greatly appreciate, and I would have certainly taken it out before this, to have specified Greg Crom as the engineer. He's, he's got other responsibilities and I'm not sure what, what it means to say, quote, "an engineer." But at the same time, it was added that there's the town engineer or designee. I'm not sure that we're going to put some required an engineer to be on this. There's different kinds of engineers. There's chemical engineers and traffic, traffic safety engineers and structural engineers, et cetera. So, I'm, I'm not sure that we, quote, want to simply talk about having an engineer on that at all. Hopefully, with some members from the community, there's a place where it talks about two residents of the town, one of those might be an engineer that has experience in traffic or civil engineering, typically would be the discipline that would cover that. But I would, I would, in general, suggest two thoughts. One is that we want to keep the number of people down so that it's an effective group, and secondly, specifically, that the town engineer part, that, that particular line item be taken out. So, I'd be glad to work on those things also.
Yeah, I think, one of the questions on this is, the fire chief has specific input regarding turning radiuses of engines and how they get in and out and so on, and proximity to hydrants and so on. Police chief in terms of overall track, traffic safety, highway superintendent in terms of what might be the case in terms of road maintenance, plowing, things like that. Town engineer, we don't have a, do we have a town engineer per se right now?
No, we do not, so.
Okay, I would say if there's a town engineer.
John, can I make, can I make additional comments?
I can take that out and add it later if we need it, if we don't have one now.
Here's the thought, John, and it goes further down, I'm sorry, I had actually taken this out. It talks about adjunct members, non-voting. The, the point of having this committee does not mean that the committee cannot bring in, quote, "experts." Most of the things that they deal with probably do not involve whether there's a turning radius available for a fire truck for this particular instance, whether you put a, a stop sign there or not, doesn't have anything to do with the turning radius of the vehicle, unless you put the stop sign in the way so they can't make the turn. The, the point that I'm making here is that the committee can certainly bring people in as necessary that are experts in a particular area. For example, if there's a development, that certainly the, the fire chief would be involved if the, if the traffic study committee is making some advice on the, on the development, and that was an added item in here, which, which was good, then, then the police, the fire chief would attend and be involved with that particular one. And secondly, with this idea of having police officers, I think that's kind of up to the police chief. He's on the committee if he feels that this is the time to bring the, the particular people in from the traffic safety group, then fine, bring those in, but I don't know that it's necessary to put those down as, quote, "the official members," especially since they're not voting at all, they're available to come in and help.
Can I, Dick, you raised a number of questions, and I'm actually not in disagreement. Adjunct, we can always bring in other people as necessary, but what I would like to suggest we do with this, unless Chief Hubby or Kevin, you feel this wouldn't be wise, I know this ball, you could see it as being kicked down the street, but it needs to be done right, because we're changing a piece of how we do work. Can we put this off another stage and allow, Dick, if you'd be kind enough to put your thoughts down and concerns and so on, because I'm not disagreeing with you on them, but I'm just thinking I don't want to take too long in this meeting.
Yeah, great, great.
And if you do that, and then we'll talk about it in our next meeting. We have a meeting on the 24th and we could have a discussion at that time. Kevin, you have something?
Mr. Chairman, I think that from a timing standpoint, it's everyone's, I think everyone's purpose, we want to get it right. This is still a working draft, so we absolutely, I think that's a great idea to get the feedback now and then get the comments in and bring something that's a little more refined to the group.
I don't want to try and ram this through, and I.
No.
Raised a couple of reasonable questions, and I think that getting them all collected and then kind of seeing what it's going to be in advance, and we go through the ding ding ding, we agree with this, 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 and so on. Dick, that'd be a time when, I think, when we kind of know what we're doing and we're not sort of kind of reacting and thinking at the same time, it may help us to do this more efficiently, and as you and Kevin have both said, let's do it right.
Mr. Chairman, if I can make one other comment, if that's okay, just to, for, for thought for the board as they're considering this between now and the next meeting. Do you want to address the town engineer? We, we don't have a town engineer. It'd be great if we did, but obviously, a town like Topsfield, we leverage the skills that we have without creating new positions when possible. And initially, the thought was to have Greg Crom be a member of this, and so, the effort here was to make a creative way to, to sort of acknowledge his engineering background. And you're right, Mr. Gant, should be a civil engineer or, or somebody who has a, a traffic specific type background through engineering. That's why I, I did put in there, or the designee. So, in essence, we don't have a town engineer, so then who, who's appointed? The thought being, we could try to get creative and try to find a way to have that seat available for Mr. Crom, because he, he is very talented and I think would be a huge asset to this group. So, you know, maybe we can try, if it's not the wording "town engineer," because it's not technically a position in the town, maybe it's in a, other member of the town's staff that, that, that the board and the town administrator would like to appoint, I don't know. But I wouldn't, he's not a resident, so if we want him in, we would need to have some sort of, some language there for that position.
I'd like to, I'd like to put that into our next discussion, so we do get a chance to think about that. It's always possible to amend this and add a town engineer if we have one or a designee, but let's think about that. I'd like to just check, is it the consensus of the board that we postpone this to a next meeting and that we seek input from the board on this particular copy here? Kevin, you have markups in it. Dick, you've had no markups of yours in this, so you'll be able to add that. And let's talk about it next time when we've all had a chance to sort of see what the suggested changes are, and go through point by point. Is that reasonable?
Sounds good.
I'd like to make a point about the fact that we can continue to wordsmith this kind of a document forever, and I'm not in favor of that, because it'll never end. I think what we need to do tonight, so that we can move on, we've got other things to talk about, but I think what we can do tonight is agree that we, we need to reorganize the Traffic Advisory Committee. This is a first step, and I think we can get on with it behind the scenes and come back and with a document that we're all comfortable with.
Yep.
As a first cut, as a first cut, I think you guys did a great job, but we can wordsmith it for sure.
And hopefully, the, the next meeting, we do get to wrap it up, because this is actually the second cut now. We gave input.
I want to do that. Marshall has arrived home, and there's a cop behind you, maybe it's one of Neil's guys who is giving you a ticket for speeding through Topsfield, Marshall?
I was, I was following the speed limit the whole way.
Good for you, because the reflection of this phenomenon in your glasses, I know, is leaning into the screen to keep track of.
Wait till you're in a self-driving car and you want to go faster, and it won't let you go faster, because the speed limit would be exceeded.
Marshall, I just want to get your sense of, sense of the committee. We have the other four of us are feeling that it is appropriate.
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I think that they're, I would agree that we can delay this. I'd be happy to listen to all of Mr. Hens' edits. I still think that there's discussion to be had on broader overarching issues, but I guess we can do that next.
Yeah, I think we should have those out so we can think about them in advance. They should be sent out not for discussion, but for preparation for the public discussion on the 24th, and at that time, we will necessarily take the time necessary, but I for one would feel a lot better just to see what the whole is looking like in terms of people's input. So, with that, I'd like to set aside this at this time, and Kevin, you have something? First, I just want to ask, Chief, you okay with this?
Absolutely.
Okay, Kevin?
We want to get. I ask for edits or to be delivered to me by noon on, on Monday. That way, we can incorporate them, have any further discussion on a one-on-one basis, and then resend this out by Tuesday, which is our, our goal for material for the select board work session on Thursday.
Excellent. Thank you for the clarification.
So, Tuesday, which, what, what's the date on Tuesday?
It's gonna be 20.
22nd.
22nd.
Okay.
So, by the 21st at noon time, if the edits can be sent in, I'll then, we'll have it distributed within probably close to 24 hours or 14 hours thereafter to the group to see the edits.
Yeah, we do want 24 hours plus, better 48 to look at, so that's great. Yeah, we do want 24 hours plus better 48 to look at. So that's great. With that, I'd like to move on, since the consensus of the board is to postpone further discussion and move on to a street signage placement and replacement. And I will hand this, I don't know whether this is Superintendent Wilds or whether it's Mr. Haratunian will speak first.
I'll tell you, I'll kick it off, and then I'll let the team join in on the conversation, obviously. So we mentioned earlier in the remarks about the traffic advisory and that there's been a number of neighborhoods who've reached out to Chief Huby and to the town administrator's office and to Superintendent Wilds. The three of us plus valuable members of our team, some of which are on the call, who've been looking at this and helping us address certain areas. But it's not limited to just those neighborhoods. There's been some, a real deeper dive at looking at some of the other intersections which have been, are potentially problematic or are problematic based on lack of signage or inappropriate locations for signage, and even a little bit of infrastructure work, which we'll talk about in one of the roads, that would be necessary to try to improve those intersections. Now, just note, too, that Topsfield's beautiful and unique in that there's a lot of country roads that have, over the years, become paved in main ways. And a lot of intersections that we're going to look at today flare out, they split, and then islands created as it enters into another road. And so we are typically, you want a T-intersection when you're building a road from scratch. It's the ideal engineering way to do a roadway safely. So we're sort of working within what we have without changing the character of what we have. And I think that, I'll let Chief explain individually the different locations that we've looked at and that we've talked through, and the recommendations that the group would like to propose for the select board to consider today. Chief?
What one would you like to start on, Mr. Town Administrator?
Chief, let's start with Raleigh Bridge Road. The reason being that we have the diagrams in order in board docs. It'll be a little easier to follow it if we start at the top. Plus, they get more complex as we go down the line.
Okay, that's fine. If you just keep me on track, what one we're doing next, that would be great. I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. So on Hill Street, when you're coming down towards Raleigh Bridge Road, the Hill Street, the path of the way the street goes veers off to the left, that's the continuation of Hill Street, and then it blends in with Raleigh Bridge Road. Raleigh Bridge Road would have the right-of-way going in an east or west direction, but there is no stop signs when Hill Street blends in with Raleigh Bridge Road at the straightaway or in the fork to the left of the road. We, at our last, one of our last meetings, we put up the stop sign on Hill Street coming into town. But what we're doing tonight is proposing two additional stop signs. So there's, it's pretty crystal clear to people that they need to stop because the right-of-way is for Raleigh Bridge Road for the residents to go east or west.
So you're adding, we've already put the one in that's in the lower part of the paper. You're putting the two other ones in that are close to Raleigh Bridge Road in this particular schematic, correct?
That is correct.
So now, now the one, the one that's on the, quote, "island," that it's an interesting island there, right? It's not, not a very obvious island of sorts. So I'm sure you've thought about this, but to me, it feels like it's sticking out in the middle of the road. I didn't, I didn't go down there and look at it, but knowing that intersection a little bit, it looks to me like that's kind of more in the middle of the road than on a, quote, "island."
The, the stop sign, Mr. Gant?
That's right, right.
Right, so the, the stop sign would be on that?
They're all stop signs, by the way, right? All three of them are stop signs, correct?
That is correct, yes. So when we went down there, we looked at it, that was the most visible spot. And we could also put a stop bar as well on the pavement. But we're trying to do this at minimum expense but have the most exposure to stop the cars. So when we place those signs at the most visible spot for the motorists coming down after they make that left-hand turn, then they're going to see the stop sign, and it's very visible.
Okay.
Yeah, I've seen people swing, once they get off Raleigh Bridge Road, it just like wang, they're moving at a big pace there. And so I think that makes a lot of sense.
I can tell you, that is a relatively new person to town. Every time I've driven here, I've stopped and just tried to figure out where the hell it is I'm supposed to be going to begin with. So the more signage, the better, as far as I'm concerned.
Any other comments on this?
Looks good to me.
Okay, with that, Neil, let's move on to the next one. The next one is Salem Road and Hill Street.
So again, this is another very complex island and intersection. Again, there's no signage at all. It's the, you have Salem Road that goes more of an east, north-south direction, but then veers off to the left going in an easterly direction. And that, Salem Road, the continuation, would have the right-of-way. The problem is, when you come down Salem Road from Route 1, heading in a westerly direction, and you opt not to continue on Salem Road, and you go to the right, there is a small extension of Salem Road that brings you to Hill Street. So it made sense that if you opt, if you're coming down Salem Road, to continue on Salem Road to the, towards the co-op, that you would have the right-of-way. But if you opt to stay to the left of the island prior to entering Hill Street, it would make sense that you would have to stop there before you made a left or a right. And 99% of the people would take a left, would take a left there. We also are proposing, when you come down Hill Street, not necessarily because there's a good sightline of seeing what is coming in on your right side of your vehicle, but to put a yield sign. So again, giving the residents or, you know, the members that are visiting this community, that Salem Road would visibly have the right-of-way, Hill Street would have the yield to the right-of-way, and residents that wanted to go from Salem Road to Hill Street would have to stop.
Looks good to me.
Any other?
When you said that, the summary at the end there, the Salem Road to Hill Street stop is for somebody that is turning left from Salem Road to Hill Street.
That is correct.
Going right, they don't see that stop sign at all. So that's a, that's a given stop sign for only turning left, essentially. It doesn't say it, but that's the only way people are going to do that.
That is correct.
On the yield sign, the way I understand it is you're saying that someone coming, and by the way, these schematics need to have, if we're going to, we have to have a way of referring to things, they need to have a north arrow on them so that we know, which, when we're saying northwest, we know what they're talking about. But at any rate, in the sense of coming down Hill Street to the end of Hill Street as it moves towards town, there is a yield sign there, and that Hill Street person that's going into town, so to speak, needs to yield to whoever's on Salem Road, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I have a concern about that. With the forks, it's always an issue. But in this, in the way this fork would be, is the person coming down Hill Street is essentially going to be looking over, looking to their, to their right and almost over their shoulder to see if somebody is coming down Salem Road. It would seem that in this sort of instance, it is always better to put the yield sign on the opposite side, meaning in this case, along Salem Road, so that somebody come down Salem Road can keep going. They're curving around, they're not making a hard turn, but they could keep going as long as they turn to the left, they're driving, they're on the left-hand side, and they look uphill street, then they would know that there's nobody coming, they can better yield. So I think, I think it's worth thinking that part through.
The only reason we propose this is because Hill Street is, Salem Road has the right-of-way. Hill Street is blending in, and there's a, the line of sight when you are driving on Hill Street coming into town, you would never ever look over your, totally over your right shoulder. All you're doing is glancing out the right side of the window, and you can follow, you can see traffic almost all the way up Salem Road prior to that intersection. So we, we even anticipated not even putting a yield sign because it's so visible there. But we figured on the error of side of caution that we should put a yield sign because the Salem Road access has the right-of-way. But the line of sight is tremendous there when you're coming down Hill Street.
Okay. You offered a thought right there that you, you had the stop sign, and then you said, well, for great caution, put the yield in. Consider that perhaps we should go with the stop sign first, see how it goes. Because, yes, I agree, it's a very open area and does have some reasonable sightlines. So perhaps just go with the stop sign to start with, see how that works out, and then add the yield sign if you feel that it's still that much more important.
Dick, I've been on that road quite a bit. I personally think, as you're coming on Hill Street, it is a little clear. I've seen it several times when there have been detours on Route 1 or events and so on, and people are going there. I have seen confusion at that. And one of the things I like about the yield sign is that it isn't a full stop. So somebody coming down Hill Street, if there's no one coming, you can go right through. And there's enough visibility there, as the chief points out, that you have several seconds of time before you'd have to put your brakes on, that you can kind of assess whether you're going to need to or not. And that it's a conditional when there is traffic on Salem Road. I've also seen trucks turn down Salem Road, and it's cars try to beat them. I've seen that once. And I think there's no harm in putting a yield sign there. It truly clarifies where the right-of-way is, which I would consider a positive.
I would agree with you, John. I think, I think also that yield sign will help for people who are coming from the co-op on Salem Road and taking a left. Because the people who are coming down Hill Street, it would actually, they cross the people who are coming up from Salem Road and continuing on to Route 1. So by having the people coming down the street stop, it, you know, gets rid of the chance of having any kind of an accident from that perspective as well. Not just the people coming from Route 1 down to the co-op, but coming up from the co-op to, to Route 1. That's a really dangerous spot. And that Hill Street, I'll tell you, I never stop there. I'm always assuming it's the Salem Road people who are stopping, and they tend to. So it's, it's backwards. The normal reaction of people, if you're coming down that hill, just keep going, like you have the right-of-way. So I think the yield is important.
Great.
Let's go on to the next. This is the Avril Street extension, I guess you, sorry, it's the Avril Street and Boston Road, the Avril Street extension right by Ipswich Road traffic lights.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So we have a real concern with that area. People do use that as a sort of a cut-through. Not many people use it as a cut-through to actually avoid the light. Very few people actually go there and then would take a left-hand turn going north on Boston Street. The real concern is that it's only 17 feet in width, that two vehicles can't safely pass by one another. We have the overgrown of the shrubbery that area, so it's very difficult in the spring and fall season, as we've witnessed in the past. The highway department does a great job in trying to cut that back. But again, sometimes it does have escaped us. So it's a very narrow, short period of roadway that we see real no purpose, that why motor vehicles can't go down to the light, follow the traffic signals, and take an appropriate left-hand turn onto Ipswich Road, and that we would propose that we have a "do not enter" sign at the entrance of Avril Street Extension on Boston Street to avoid any head-on collisions or to, you know, have a near misses with trucks or motor vehicles trying to pass each other in that area. So we're proposing a "do not enter" from Route 1 onto Avril Street Extension.
Chief, I'd like to just say, obviously Boyd lives in that same neighborhood, but I am one of those who frequently uses that as a way to avoid the lights when I'm going south on Route 1. I've seen a confrontation on the road between a truck of some size and a car that didn't think it had room to get by. And I've also seen someone turning from the left in there with a trailer, and the trailer was stuck out on Route 1 while the truck had to wait till somebody came the other direction. And I'm one of those who will be inconvenienced by not having that option, cutting off the traffic light. But I still support it because I think it's safer for everybody. Boyd may be unhappy, but I'm okay with it.
I'm, I'm, I'm not unhappy at all. I use it once in a while to turn left there going north on Route 1 to avoid the light. And look, inconvenience to me, but it's not a big deal. I would wonder, though, Neil, if, if you, there's a lot of people that live on Avril Street, and they probably are going to come down Avril Street and use that extension to get downtown. That could be an issue for them because now they've got to turn right and go to the light.
Well, Boyd, I would say, many times when I'm coming out there, I observe people who are waiting for a break in the traffic going north and the traffic coming south. And it's not uncommon. You see somebody just have to floor it to get through to get across. If they instead had to take a right and then their left, I understand that and so on. But it just seems to me it's an opportunity to avoid an accident waiting to happen.
Well, I agree. I don't have a problem with it either. And the people that live on Avril Street that I was just talking about, they can get downtown by going the other direction to Hollup Street and going downtown via.
Lots of options, I agree.
Our biggest concern was the width of it. And then seeing the
I'm sure.
In the volume of cars using it, it just makes it safer that we don't have the confrontations, that we're being proactive in avoiding something before we have a, an incident. That was the premise behind it. It's the same premise when we looked at Grove Street, of why we made that one directional, because there wasn't enough space for two cars to pass safely by. So we're using the same concepts when we evaluate every street or situation where it's brought to our attention. We're not looking for trouble, we're not going out and looking for more work. But, you know, these are ones that have been brought to our, our attention, and we feel it's, you know, to be responsible, we have to investigate these and look at these in every aspect of it.
Yep. Any other questions on this?
Yeah, go ahead, Dick.
Did you do any searches of accidents in any of these particular things that we're looking at these five instances?
I did not do an accident research. As I said, I'm trying to be more proactive instead of being reactionary, looking at the history of it. We're trying to be, again, transparent, looking at the safety of all of our intersections and roadways. And so this is one that was brought to our attention. And, you know, I, again, I want to be proactive, and I want to avoid accidents rather than just say historical data is why I'm doing this.
Well, I will say, I will miss this one because I use it a lot myself. I do floor it to get across in time because there's just a small window of opportunity to get over there.
And it can be a challenge. Any other questions on this one? Let's move on to the next. This is the Camp Meeting Road situation and Boston Road, Camp Meeting Road, Aaron Drive and North Street.
Okay, so If I could just say one quick thing, if that's all right, we real quickly interrupt. So I just want to, this is the one of these before you tonight where we've met with a number of the residents on this, and multiple times, to try to find some relief to some of the concerns they've had. And the proposal that is in front of you tonight, and the chief will walk you through that, I do want to just make sure. Prior conversations included a socially distancing meeting with the neighbors where they shared some of their thoughts. Chief did some incredible work, working with Superintendent Wilds, came to some possible solutions to relieve some of the concerns and create a safer environment. Once we met as a team out on Once we met as a team out on site and determined some of the tweaks to it and making sure we got everything the way we wanted it, we invited the neighbors again to a follow-up meeting, had over 25, as chief mentioned earlier, participating in that conversation. We shared with them what we were going to propose to the select board, making sure they understood that this is just a proposal, but to ensure that we had some feedback from the neighbors. It's important, as you all know, when you make impactful changes, especially with some of the geometry that we'll talk about, that people who are affected on day-to-day basis are comfortable with it. And we asked for feedback during that meeting and the feedback was from every single person there, a positive, which I do want to make sure I mention that before chief gets into the details. Thank you. Sorry for interrupting.
I would add that those two stop signs are important because that, my business used to be located at the corner of Camp Meeting and Boston Street and I use that intersection a lot. And boy, when you come off of Route One and want to go down Camp Meeting onto North Street, that is really hairy and a stop sign there is going to be a really good idea. Chief, I've got a question. Coming out of Aaron Drive toward Route One, is there a stop sign at North Street on Aaron Drive?
No, there's not.
That might be another good place to put a stop sign because people come out of Aaron Drive and blow right across North Street.
There is one on the diagram.
This is proposed already, that's here on this proposal.
Now, Mr. Jackson's talking about the other way.
I'm talking about the other day, coming out of Aaron Drive.
Oh, Aaron Drive to Camp Meeting, I see, right at the peak of that little V that's there for the island.
Yeah, so I didn't extend Aaron Drive across, I apologize for my artwork. We have limited resources, but the, I would agree because we're solving one problem, but we're not solving the second problem of Aaron Drive. So Aaron Drive, before they cross in a east or west direction, should have to stop because North Street has the right of way.
There should be a stop sign on Aaron Drive at North Street.
I'm looking at street view. I don't know what the date of the street view is, but there's a stop sign on the street view that I'm looking.
Heading towards Route One, there is a stop sign at Aaron Drive.
I will share my screen if people would like to see what I'm talking about.
If you do that briefly, please, Marshall. It's that back, I believe.
So you can see there's a stop sign there, that's Aaron Drive that I'm sitting on headed toward North Street. According to this, that picture was taken in July of 2014, so not exactly the most up-to-date footage, but.
Where is the stop sign, Marshall?
It's over on the.
Oh, you know what, it could be that my view of everybody on the meeting, oh, there it is, is blocking it.
That satisfies me, there is a stop sign, I'll rest my case.
So that stop sign is essentially, as we look at the diagram that's provided in board docs, about a quarter of an inch below the A in Aaron Drive, it's right at that corner right there.
Yep.
And which is, that meets the concern that you had, Boyd, correct?
Yep, it does indeed.
Excellent, thank you.
Now, there is a yield sign where the stop sign is at Camp Meeting and North Street, so we're going to be replacing a yield sign with a stop sign, correct?
That is correct. And that yield sign is so far into the woods, nobody really follows that yield sign.
That's right.
We proposed and there's going to be a little structural change because, again, that the line of sight when you're coming down Camp Meeting Road, entering onto North Street, very challenging to see, still see anything on your right-hand side. So we're going to try to square that off a little more so the cars will be able to pull out and they'll be able to see both left and right at the stop sign and then proceed to their left-hand turn.
Was there any consideration of taking out some of the trees there on what is public property? And if it's, and if it would be helpful to do it on private property to see if the owner of that property would allow us to cut in, we'll say, six feet into his property for additional trees if that were necessary. That, I agree with that whole area, I understand it, and the sightline going from Camp Meeting into North Street is terrible. So if something could be done with the trees in that area, and you can see that in the diagram that you brought up, Marshall, those trees in that area are, it'd be very nice to be able to clear it back. If you had a house on that island, so to speak, you wouldn't have trees there because typically your house would push the tree, yeah. You can see how many trees are there. You can't see the particular intersection I'm referring to, but you can see how crowded those trees are on that island. And to be able to cut them back from North Street might be very, very, very helpful.
Marshall, if you go back to the view facing out towards Route One. This one, are you proposing, are you proposing the one, no, the one you were just at there?
No, this is, this is coming off Route One headed toward.
I want to see the other direction, you just had it up there, there was a yield sign in the middle. My question, should that be a stop sign? Nope, that's not it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That right there. Should this be replaced with a stop sign, that yield sign?
It is going to be.
It is going, yeah, it is going to be.
And what we want to do is take some of those trees out that are just to the right of that yield sign.
So when we looked at this, that's a perfect picture. When you look at this, it's rounded, you know, again, 45 degrees going off to the left there. We're talking about squaring that off and when we square it off beyond the yield sign, that allows you to get further into that intersection without being on North Street, your line of sight is really good. And it's, we won't have to take out trees if we square that off.
And it's a low-cost solution, we talked about. And also, it makes it a little less available for people to make that hard turnaround around that island, which is already a very difficult turn if someone was to take that right when they come off that because of the angle of the road. But when we walked it, we walked right up to where the sign would be on that extension and it makes for a significant improvement on that sightline. Mr. Gant's point is spot on with the sightlines.
Yeah, and I would suggest that if it turns out that it really isn't satisfactory, and I'm going to guess everyone on this board will drive by there as well as all the people involved, if for whatever reason or other, after the work that's being proposed here is completed, can always take another step if we need to, but I think this would go a long way and if we need to go further, we have that option, of course.
I agree.
With that, I'd like to move on to the next, which is the other end of Camp Meeting Road. This is the fifth of the five locations. This is obviously important because everything's highlighted in yellow, I guess.
This is the most comprehensive one with the most adjustments. We got an overwhelming support from all of the residents that showed up at the meeting regarding this. Again, I alluded to the fact that this has been the 29-year concern of the residents. They were very ecstatic at the, how comprehensive we were in our evaluation of this and what we are proposing. So the, first and foremost, we, at the bottom of the page where it says trucks prohibited, the only question came up is that should it be commercial vehicles prohibited and not just trucks? Because how do we define a truck? Is it 8,400 pounds? Is it, you know, 26,000 pounds? We have a lot of oversized pickup trucks dragging big trailers, that, so maybe it makes more sense to have your sign and say, "Commercial vehicles prohibited," so that can be sort of discussed. But we want to do some prohibiting larger vehicles from that roadway, forcing them down to Ipswich Road at Route One to make that left-hand turn. We think it's extremely important that the select board does some sort of prohibiting of those larger vehicles. That way we can contact Google's map and MapQuest and Waves, because once the select board makes that determination, they can actually, we can request that they take it off the GPS as a cut through. So that was the first discussion point. Then we were going down further and a lot of this was contributed to the sightline and I think everyone can acknowledge the fact that if you continued on Camp Meeting down to Ipswich Road, you're taking your life in your own hands to try to pull out Ipswich Road. Honestly, I stopped, even in a police car, I stopped going down there because you can't see left, you can't see right, and I just had this fear of getting in a major accident with the town vehicle. So a lot of that was my personal experience when I took a look at this. I thought the residents may object to this, but they thought it was a phenomenal plan. We evaluated that when you're going down Camp Meeting past East Street, that all traffic will be diverted with the right-hand turn arrows and also do not enter, and everybody will go up to Ipswich Lane. When you go up to Ipswich Lane and Ipswich Road, it's probably a 600-yard sightline in either direction and it makes it extremely safe. There's no, there's only one driveway at the top of Ipswich Lane, so it's not going to be a huge burden on, from the residential perspective of that, and it just makes it really safe. When you're coming down Ipswich Lane from Ipswich Road, we saw the island, which just sits in the middle, and then you see some crossed-out area. Through a lot of discussions, there was no purpose of having Ipswich Lane fork off in a left or a right direction, that we would actually save money in the current paving project and not pave that. And that at a later time would be, that would just be a gravel area or a loom, you know, area that we would extend the green space of that area. So the traffic would come down from Ipswich Road onto Ipswich Lane, they could only take a left-hand turn to make that safe. The traffic on Camp Meeting Road would all be diverted to Ipswich Lane to make a nice line of sight to go left or right onto Ipswich Road. And then going down further at the end of Camp Meeting, where Ipswich Road, again, there'd be the commercial vehicles prohibited area, but in this paving project, we wanted to not totally square it off, but we wanted to narrow that right-hand turn from Ipswich Road. The concern is if the traffic on Ipswich Road, the speed of the motor vehicle is going 40, 45 miles an hour, it's almost like a true on-ramp or off-ramp from a highway. There was nothing to deter a vehicle to slow down when you turn right onto Camp Meeting Road. And the first speed limit sign is 1,800 feet up. It's well beyond the Ipswich Lane road that's merging in. So the cars just continue going 40, 45 miles an hour until they're almost at East Street. So what we did is we measured that, we made, we went out 22 feet from that little island to actually restrict that. And we actually, we did a little study of what the traffic would have to slow down to safely make a right-hand turn. And if we square that off, a vehicle traveling at 40 miles an hour on Ipswich Road would literally have to reduce the speed to 17 miles an hour to safely make that right-hand turn. So now, again, we're having cars entering safer, they're entering in the, at a lower speed, and then by the time they get up to the posted 30 mile an hour zone, they're going to see the posted sign. There's no traffic coming in at them, it's technically a one-way. We would, I guess our first thought would be like, you know, what do we do with the other half of the island? Because as you know, there's a telephone pole right at the end of Camp Meeting and you can go left or right. But we had a look at everything, how fire trucks would enter both directions, how they plow during the winter time, and we needed a access road for vehicles to make a left-hand turn onto Camp Meeting because we're forcing all the vehicles down, you know, if they went, they were on Ipswich Road and wanted to take a left-hand turn to come in, also there's those three or four residents of that area and giving them access into their own driveways. So I think with this plan, we tackled a lot of obstacles and we actually met a lot of the needs and a lot of the concerns for the residents and it was overwhelming appreciation from all those residents. So that's a summary.
Chief, is there any need for or concern about the fact that these cars now on Ipswich Road will be slowing down to such a degree to take that right-hand turn? Does there need to be any warning to people that that could be occurring so that people are familiar? Right now, people probably just go flying because as you said, they turn off so quickly. And you need to indicate that that's slowing down and that right-hand turn?
You're talking about a rear end, right?
Yes.
I think it's going to be just a typical right-hand turn. I think that, you know, we can always have, I think there's going to be a learning curve to this. We can put up some temporary signs to allow, there's a, I would probably propose that we put up the, a sign board that says, "New traffic configuration," put that up for 30 days. I think that we can do all the warning signs, but the ultimate goal is that, you know, the vehicles come, they're going to take a, it's still 22 feet, you know, we're just trying to, it's not like they're going to come, going from 40 to a dead stop, they can still make a safe turn, they're just slowing down some. They use the directional lights and they follow the rules of the road. And then we do some, you know, warning indicators for 30 days prior to, I think that will be.
I think the warning indicators is a good idea because people have set patterns, they've been traveling a certain way for so long, when this comes up suddenly, they may not even be thinking that something has changed.
Yeah, definitely, Lynn, is there's a, there's always, people are pretty used to the people in the left side trying to turn off into Perkins Road and just before that. So my sense is that that's the place the folks have been doing 55 down, you know, Ipswich Road from, you know, past the Turner Hill and all that stuff. Oftentimes that begins to slow them, it's the first sort of big curve where you can't see too much. I think with the signs that this is something that, I guess my sense is, this is a fantastic way to start. If we need some additional signage to encourage people to slow down, we'll figure it out pretty quickly and learn.
Yeah, I think chief is right. Not that it has to be permanent, but just when you make such change, people are creatures of habit.
They'll get, I think they'll get used to it and I think the idea of a sign board and then maybe some cones on top. Chief, I really liked that rather sharp corner on the 22-foot bump out because the eye, I mean, it'll probably be slightly radius, but the eye sees that as a right-hand turn in as opposed to when the curve is kind of gracefully around, that's when folks, particularly because they're on the right side, they're going to stay on the right side, it's like, how close can I get to that curve and keep my speed up? Right angle doesn't read the same way.
I'll give you, I'd like to give you a personal story about the fact that coming down Camp Meeting Road toward Ipswich Road and diverting everybody up Ipswich Lane is a major step improvement. The reason I say that is because I was on my bicycle one time, a number of years ago, came down Meeting House Lane, and because of the sightline being so bad at Ipswich Road, I got hit by a car on my bicycle and I survived. But nevertheless, I always go up Ipswich Lane instead of down Camp Meeting Road to Ipswich Road. Good job, chief.
Chief, you mentioned there's one driveway on Ipswich Lane, is that a home? Is that a residence?
The physical address is on Ipswich Road, not on Ipswich Lane.
Okay. I just didn't want that one poor house to be getting all the traffic now.
It would have little to no impact.
Yeah, I think that would, this is going to cut down so much to begin with. Chief, the one other thing I would strongly recommend because I talk about it all the time, commercial vehicles, there are a lot of landscapers towing long trailers and so on, and I would absolutely encourage the use of a "commercial vehicles prohibited" rather than trucks for just the reasons that you mentioned.
Chief, how would trucks, commercial trucks that are servicing people on Camp Meeting get in and out?
There would be no restrictions for that, you know, we know we're going to have UPS deliveries, we know we're going to have, you know, contractors going there, we know that. Having the signage, the appropriate signage allows us to stop them. Having the signage, the appropriate signage allows us to stop them. And if they prove that they're rendering a service to the residents, then absolutely they're welcome. We're not restricting services, trash trucks, bus routes or anything. We're just trying to avoid commercial vehicles using that as a raceway, using that as a cut through to get to Hamilton or Ipswich. You know, so again, it's taking nothing away from the residents whatsoever. Everyone is welcome to get, receive the same services as they always have. But the signage is so important to us because it gives us a legal right to stop the people and further investigate.
If I could just pitch in real quickly too. So the existing sign that's there that's set back that will be moving up to the point of entry so that people don't, with a vehicle of size is coming down, is a similar sign that's in a lot of locations around town, limiting, I think it's 12,000 pounds. Is that what exists now, Chief?
That's what's posted right now.
Yeah, and that's consistent on a number of locations where we have truck limitations. So the one thing Chief and I talked about, it was a resident who posed that commercial restriction. And we talked a little bit about that was any type of variation from the 12,000 pounds, which is again, what I've observed and seems to be consistent. We just want to make sure we're comfortable with that type of change because the next street might look for the next one and the impacts associated with it. So I think Chief mentioned at the top that this was something that was, we wanted to talk through with the board to get a little bit of your input on it as we work through what the right treatment would be. The other thing too is we started with something that's the same that exists now and it doesn't do what we hope it will do. And we need to reduce and create more restrictions. We always could look at that commercial option, which is kind of the next step down the road if we chose to do so. So just food for thought.
Chief, do you think there are going to be other roads coming forward?
So we're, you know, we're, I've already had a meeting with Wenham Road. They have some grave concerns. Barksford Road coming into town. So I could just go on the list. But again, that's why it was so important to be so transparent, meet with the neighbors, get their input. And that's why I really looked at this being consistent and treating every street the same and having everybody involved in these decisions that we're not going down the wrong rabbit hole that's going to cause us grief and problems in the future. That's why Mr. Town Administrator brought up the fact that what we do today may have an impact on another street or a reversal of a decision of the past. So, you know, these are drastic changes. But again, you know, there's been a lot of concern from these residents who have identified all of these problems. I've spent numerous hours walking that street, measuring, taking the time. And I really think that this is, these drastic changes need to take place at this street. And I feel very comfortable with them.
Back to the truck signage. At the other end of Camp Meeting where it intersects with Route 1, there is truck signage, correct?
So on Route 1, both north and south, the state has put up signs that will say that it already states trucks prohibited next left or trucks prohibited next right. On Camp Meeting.
So that's, so that's existing now and has been for four or five years, correct?
Right, but then on Camp Meeting, about 30 yards in, there's a sign that says trucks greater than 12,000 pounds are prohibited. And that's, and that's the problem of what is 12,000 pounds as compared to what the state has put up that says trucks are prohibited.
Neil, can I jump in for a second? Technically, the commercial vehicle is 10,000 pounds or greater now. So there is going to be a problem. That is a three-quarter ton pickup. Can be listed as a commercial vehicle and required to register as so or ensure as such. That's my pickup for the town. So there may be an issue there. I hate to be a stick in the mud, but we're going to have to, this was just brought to my attention recently. It may be something we have to discuss further as to what regulations we hold people accountable to for those kinds of things. And I have one other concern. It has to do with my paving plan. I hate to be selfish, but my fiscal 21 paving plan starts Monday. And it has to do with Camp Meeting and Ipswich Road and whether these things go through or not in agreement now that get voted on later has an impact on what I do or do not do Monday morning at 6:00 AM. Yeah, sorry to be selfish.
I would just say that we have the option as, I assume we're going to probably go ahead with a motion on all of these. But if we need to do, we could peel one off to support something. But at this moment, we understand that it is important. And I like to say, I haven't heard any sense that we should postpone a vote on this per se. My sense of the board is that we're in agreement on all of this with some minor questions that I feel we can comfortably leave to resolution. You know, what does the actual truck sign say and so on and so forth? But with all that, I guess the question. With all that, for consensus, I'm not sure that there's that much consensus. I would see, I would see some of them being very straightforward in the sense that we've talked about them before and they don't seem to be a particular change from what people are doing. Other ones specifically Avril Extension and this one are significant. And one of the things I would think we might want to do is ensure, in the case of the Avril Street, for example, that the public has a chance to weigh in on them. If we had some specific things that said it doesn't work because we've had this many accidents here or there, we'd have, I'm not saying we want to have that kind of information. We want to have accidents, but that would drive us to a certain thing. But where it is not clear as to why it has to be changed and it is a significant change, I think we'd like to get the residents more involved in the sense that we would wind up posting this on the website or something, some description of what it is and give the residents a chance to weigh in on those. Again, two different types, some that are relatively simple and straightforward and other ones though, that such as the one we're talking about right now, not quite so and a greater concern. So what I would like to do is ask for a motion on all of these. And then we can entertain amendments to remove one or more if we wish. But I would like to move ahead so that Gary has marching orders, all the ones that we feel we could approve. So I would entertain a motion by a board member? Well, I would like to make a motion, and it's not quite the same, but I would like to make a motion that we approve the first page, the first page, which is Rowley Bridge Road and Hill Street intersection, changed by adding two stop signs as shown, one existing already. So it's only two that are being added. And secondly, that we approve the change for the intersection of Hill Street and Salem Road, which includes the addition of one stop sign and one yield sign. Is there a second?
Second.
We have the option to approve these and then discuss the rest. So is there any discussion on these two? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Bermudez?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Spencer?
Aye.
The motion passes for approval of sign placement depicted on drawings involving Hill Street and Rowley Bridge Road and Salem Road and Hill Street. We still have the two Camp Meeting and Avril Street ones to do. Is there a motion for any or all of those?
Make a motion.
Go ahead, Boyd.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes at Avril Street Extension. And I'll make recommendations to approve the Aaron Drive stop signs. And I make a motion to approve the changes on Camp Meeting Road at Ipswich Road.
So those represent B, C, and D on the list right there. The other remaining three proposed sign placements, correct, Boyd?
Yes, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we have first and a second. Is there any new discussion on these? I'd like to take a. I would feel uncomfortable approving all of those. Well, we have a motion and I want any discussion on those. Just so I'm clear, that's everything then, right? This would, if passed, encompass all five of the proposed projects. Okay. So I'd like to take a roll call vote. And Ms. Bermudez?
Aye.
Mr. Gant? Nay. I would like to see input from residents on the changes that are proposed. We know that. You're a nay. Mr. Hook? But my reason is to be added to the minutes, please. Fine. Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Spencer?
Aye.
The motion passes four to one on the other three locations of Camp Meeting Road and Avril Street. So I appreciate that. I would very much like to thank the work of the chief. Gary Wilds, I know you've been very involved in this, as you have too, Kevin and others in looking at this. This is a lot of work. And one of the things I appreciate is it's cleaning up a lot of the concerns that people have around town, particularly the Camp Meeting Road. And I am very happy for those people that we're taking a big step in what I hope will prove to be a significant improvement in addressing the concerns they've had for such a long time. I moved to town and they were talking about Camp Meeting Road, so.
Mr. Chair, could I just ask a question of the outstanding issue of the 10,000 pounds, the 12,000 pounds? What this signage is actually going to say so that it's standardized and, you know, Gary's concerned addressed?
Chief, if it's okay, maybe if I could give my, my idea for this would be to replace like for like. And then if there's further adjustment to the sign, after doing some more due diligence and communicating with the neighborhood, we could look to do that. Again, reason for that is that it seems to be the consistent type of sign in town. And I think Mr. Wilds pointed out that there is the, if you get, what a commercial vehicle is, could be a 350, F-350 based on the weight of that vehicle. So that would just be my, my commentary on it. And we would certainly spend some more time on it. Chief, I hope you're okay with that. I kind of just jumped in on it. But if you think differently, please, by all means.
And I apologize for muddying the waters there. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. Some people are being required, is 10,000 pounds on a GBW can constitute a commercial vehicle and be required to register that, excuse me, to ensure it that way? That being said, I just want to make sure we all knew that, depending on who we're holding to a standard or not on a roadway, that we all were aware of that.
Gary, I have a question for you. If a vehicle that is 9,000 pounds is towing a trailer that is 4,000 pounds, does that count as over the limit or under?
Depending on, that's, it's a great question. Depending on who you talk to and who's enforcing, how that goes. So the GBW is your gross vehicle weight.
That's per vehicle, in other words.
Per vehicle, yes.
Okay, so if a 15,000 pound trailer was being towed by an 8,000 pound vehicle, the trailer would be the issue, but not the truck?
Technically, yes. Is that not correct, Neil?
Yes, it's the GBW that we base everything on.
Okay. I would also like to ask, since there is a question as to the fact that the rules have changed, if it was 12,000, it's now down at 10,000. I would, my own feeling is that I would ask that the chief and Superintendent Wilds look to see what it should be so that we're consistent and to adjust the signage accordingly. I agree very much that we want consistency. If indeed the rules have changed, probably we ought to make this consistent with the current state rules, given if it means there are other signs that should over time be replaced elsewhere in town.
That is, I agree.
So maybe what we could do is just hold off on maybe the sign in particular. And this will allow Mr. Wilds to do the improvements to the infrastructure that's necessary and give us a little more time to do some due diligence on the exact weight that we want to consider.
Okay, good. With that, I would like to move on to the ECDC. And I'd like to pause for just a moment and say that we have the prospect of an executive session to, that was planned, it's in the agenda. I had talked with Kevin earlier and I indicated that if this meeting was running long, that we would postpone that till our next work session. So I just want to state at this time that Item 1112 in the agenda is posted on board docs we will be postponing for a later meeting and hope that we'll move relatively quickly through these other ones as we've been here for a while. That all said, I'm going to turn this Economic and Community Development Committee, turn this to the town administrator for a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the Economic and Community Development Committee was something that we discussed a few months back, handful of months before COVID was impactful and it was tabled. But one of the things that we've all been working on, Vice Chair Bermudez, on the front lines, a lot of us on these economic development projects, was to reengage on the Economic and Community Development Committee. And the vision for this is to provide an opportunity for collaboration and communication from different stakeholders in the community around the revitalization efforts that we're making in the downtown. And with some consideration too, to the broader community. If there's a master plan, for example, down the road, this group could be involved in some of the elements and aspects of it or other items beyond that. But the hope for this group and the mission for it is to bring people together, to make sure that we're open and transparent in what's happening, getting other perspectives. And if there's action items that we need as a town, some expertise or support with that members may possess to leverage those to ensure our success as we make these investments and spend the time to make Top Seal a very exciting down, having a very exciting downtown and right for economic development in its entirety. So what we've done, just to recap, there was initial proposal that was provided months ago. We dusted off, made some new edits to that document. Have done some, I've had some communications with members of our community who might be potential members to participate. And also people who aren't necessarily going to be members, but just to kind of engage them and see what they think about creating a committee as such. And so what's before you tonight is the latest rendition of what we're proposing for the committee. And similar to the Traffic Advisory, would love some input, feedback. And I will mention, we do have VHB who is helping us with our downtown visioning and standardization.
Who's VHB? Would you be kind enough to clarify that, Kevin?
They are an engineering and design firm that is working with us. And I say us, the town and the part of the process, the greater community, on trying to come up with interesting ways to address concerns or needs or revitalization in the downtown. And part of that's consistency with some of the streetscapes and elements that we want to make sure is in the downtown. So they're an engineering design firm.
Yeah, can you explain how they came on board? Because many people may not have heard about them. This is not town money that's being spent. I think it's important that folks understand how this new name sort of showed up.
Absolutely. So we were talking about this with some of the stakeholders about what next steps we wanted to do coming out of the MAPC process and trying to identify which priorities we want to pursue.
Can I pause for a moment because you're talking in code? The MAPC process, many folks listening will remember that as the visioning session that culminated or to a large extent culminated in an event in the Great Hall at Town Hall and produced a lot of information. And so when we talk about MAPC, that is typically what we're referring to here. It provided a lot of grist of the mill. Thank you.
Absolutely. So the VHB is going to be towards the very end of this month, into the next month, kicking off the public engagement process with stakeholders to help us obtain information, feedback, desires, I guess, for the downtown, what they'd like to see and help VHB do their work in crafting up what I would call a game plan and what we can do going forward. uh, what I would call a game plan and what we could do, um, going forward. And so the hope is, um, the ECDC will support that effort, be involved in that process. Um, and so from a timing standpoint, we added this to the agenda tonight, um, so that we can continue this moving, um, as, as efficiently as possible. Um, obviously wanting to make sure that everybody's comfortable and it gets to the right place for everybody, um, if possible. And, uh, but that's, again, that's sort of where we are. Um, Vice Chair Bermudas, I don't know if you want to, you've been obviously heavily involved. I don't know if you want to, um, say a few words as well.
Um, thank you, Kevin. Um, yeah, this is a really, um, a pivotal point we're at now. So we came up with the strategic plan that laid out the vision with the help of people in town, and we identified initiatives to move forward. As Kevin has said, a couple of those are already underway. And this, um, is a group actually that we talked about. It was a recommendation coming out of the strategic plan to pull together a, a group of stakeholders who could help us in implementing, giving their advice, uh, perspective, experience and boots on the ground to help communicate and get things done. So we have a number of people, Kevin and I have talked with a number of people. We have, actually this document says seven members is being recommended, but we would up that to seven to nine. We actually have a number of people, uh, with various skillsets who would be, um, just a great asset to working with us. So since we have things underway right now, we'd like to get these people on board as soon as possible. They're actually working on helping, um, with the, uh, implementation of the, the grant that we received for the downtown, for bump outs, et cetera. Um, so we'd like to get consensus from the group to put this committee together so that we could reach out and finalize who actually is going to be, um, working with us on this.
And I'd like to point out that as in a committee appointed by the select board, um, this committee, um, all its meetings would be public. Um, they would be announced on the website. Um, the minutes would be kept and recorded. And, uh, sort of the same open meeting rules that the rest of us have to follow, the elected officials and so on, like this meeting right here, would be followed. The intention is, um, while there'll be some folks who are focused more directly on this, what goes on needs to be as public and open as possible. And, um, we've already talked a great deal about how to ensure that ideas that this, um, committee might come up with, um, will get an opportunity to be shared with, um, townsfolk and that the goal, just as was shown in the, um, the session that we have, the visioning session, the goal is to engage the town in this. Um, it's your town as much as it is ours, and we are a fraction of a percent, and we need to get a consensus among all townsfolk. So please know it's intended to be public and open, and anyone will be welcome to attend any of the meetings. So just to make it really clear, this is not sort of, they're going to go off and do something and disappear. No. And they also require quarterly to come back and give us a report on what they're doing. So at regular select board meetings, we will quarterly or more often, if they have things and request it, will be coming to, forth to, uh, make a report on what's going on. So we'll keep in touch.
And, and the activities of this group, because Kevin will be leading it, um, will be driven by the objectives of the board. So we would have already come to consensus as to what major initiatives we're looking to implement and have gotten the buy-in of the department heads working with Kevin. Um, so nothing coming out of this group would be a surprise. Um, it would be directed by the objectives of the board.
A question, if I may?
Yes, boy?
Um, uh, are you, uh, I'm not looking for names at this point in time, but you said you're going to have four members of the community. Uh, you know who those people are and are you, uh, comfortable with who they are?
Yeah, we actually were thinking four to six because the number of people that have expressed interest and the backgrounds, um, that they have, um, we would actually like to expand that a little bit. So we do have names right now, um, and actually Dick was reaching out to some people and Kevin's been reaching out. So we have what we consider to be a, a good list of names, um, at this point. Um, and we're open to discussion in this group of, uh, any, any other recommendations that might come forward.
People that are?
I, I have some names as well when that comes up.
People that are excited and look forward to moving forward with a project like this? Or, uh, are you confronted with sandbaggers who don't want it to go anywhere?
No, we're not looking for sandbaggers.
No, we, the, the group of people so far that have expressed interest have either been originally on the Main Street Foundation, um, people who have previously served in parks and cemetery, um, select board members, um, PR, advertising, communication background, business owners, TSC, um, Route One business owners. So there's a nice variety.
You're comfortable with them as a group, uh, the way it sounds?
I, yes, and open to names tonight as well. Um.
Good. Boy, the goal of this primarily is to approve the creation of the committee. Um, and correct me, Lynn, if I'm wrong, I'm not sure there's been any finalized discussion on who members would be, but if there's an agreement that we should establish this committee, obviously at some point, the specific individuals that are suggested or recommended to be part of this will come before the board. It is a board-appointed committee.
Exactly. So tonight is just the approval of the committee, the formation of the committee.
I understand.
Um, if so, any further discussion?
Well, yeah, um, uh, the, the charter of the committee is laid out in the first paragraph, which is a single sentence, is great to have it in one place. It is much, by the way, the document is, uh, much improved from the original one that we looked at, uh, about a month ago. Um, but I, I would offer this as some questions, and I actually, I had a chance to talk with Lynn about this, uh, some already. It says that the, uh, is to help enhance the town's economic infrastructure. Um, so my comment was, uh, what are examples of Topsfield's economic infrastructure that we would enhance? What, what is in our, what is our economic infrastructure?
It'd be the amount and the selection of businesses that are in the town.
Our infrastructure is a, a list of the businesses, uh, the number of businesses in the town is the infrastructure?
No. Part of it. I mean, the idea is to bring in a variety of businesses. We've talked about restaurants. We've talked about other opportunities. Um.
Most importantly, I understand the word now. Economic infrastructure refers to businesses that are situated in the town. Okay.
As well as there may be some actual infrastructure, Dick, required to support that. There could be changes in the, the layout of the town. There could be other, um, changes that we need to make in order to make it business-friendly or to have other businesses want to come in and do business in town.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you an example of infrastructure that is not something you can put your, you can touch per se, but, um, it might be the recommendation, this is not where we're starting from, but it might be the recommendation at some point that we should have some kind of business development office or an individual who is doing this. There was, let's for the moment assume that it would require an economic justification and so on. But if the creation of that was recommended, this is the group that would put the idea together, say why it's needed and come to us. That's a piece of infrastructure that isn't a road, a street, a sign, a parklet, um, or anything like that. Um, but it's also the notion of how and where we should reach out. Um, as it is right now, um, it's surprising the number of business owners from outside town who are learning now that Topsfield is working hard to become open for business. And thoughts of people who are looking at everything from restaurants to breweries to shops to all kinds of things. Um, how does that get handled? Where do the files sit? Who keeps track of all that stuff? Ultimately, that would be an example of some of the infrastructure. So we keep track of things and in that particular case, I would say, work to streamline the process since, like most of the towns around us, we get complaints for how slow and difficult it is to get any legal work done through the town.
I did have a question as to what the scope of this was relative to the town. And I believe it, the scope of it is the downtown village area. And that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about Route One as the require, as the responsibility for this group.
It could expand to that, Dick, actually. I mean, it would be driven by what the, you know, objectives of the board are, so.
It would be a change if we did?
No, I think it was written in such a way that if opportunities present themselves or we feel the need to expand into Route One, that this group could be used for that purpose as well as compared to creating an entirely new committee.
Okay.
But I would also like to say that, um, that to me would, one of the things I would expect to have prominently put forward by this committee, if they were interested in doing that. And as a report to the committee, being a selectance committee, we would then engage in the discussion of how that makes sense, what it would mean and all those things. So clearly the downtown effort is the thing. This whole thing came originally under the umbrella of downtown revitalization. And that's where we're trying to start, and that's where we're first trying to sort of pick things up and make it better for everyone down there and improve some of the darker corners of downtown, which are ripe for, um, uh, you know, better, better uses than they may be having now. And I would say that we should not expect this to go up and down to Route One, but I would expect that that committee might choose to look further out, in which case we talk with them.
I, I would suggest, in discussion, um, I would suggest that in order to help a committee have a focus, it is better to be more specific about something. And then if there's a desire to change it, to expand it in that particular case, that we not quote, "get another committee," but simply take the committee and say, "you also now have this responsibility." So, um, based on what's been said, I, I think the responsible way to do it would essentially be to make it clear to the committee that they are responsible for the downtown area. Um, and then if some things come up and they say, gee, you know, we really think we could help out in the, to add it, but I'll, I'll leave that for others to think about, uh, as a, as a recommendation.
If I could real, if I could really quickly, I'm sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to comment if I could, just from, from a, uh, operational standpoint, um, I do, again, uh, Vice Chair mentioned it was, it was purposely written in a way that could allow for the expansion, but the focus is downtown. That's why the second part of that line refers that. Um, from my perspective, um, not having an economic development planner in place, um, or planning, uh, planner per se, um, we've got some great people on the planning board and others to know planning very well and, and, uh, what's appropriate, not appropriate, and working to try to accomplish these goals that we have. Um, but you know, if there was a project that was proposed on Route One, for example, I would personally, and I'll take the leadership from the board, but I think from the, the chair, chair's comments, you know, to be able to flex up to look at that and give perspective, because a project on Route One will impact the downtown. If it's a, a housing, for example, um, 20 units or whatever, um, some project that's being proposed, they're moving the Topsfield for the amenities that come with it too. And the downtown, the more, the people, more people that come downtown, um, because there's, there's shops and restaurants, uh, and can support those shops and restaurants, that's fantastic. So there's, there's sort of that residual impact that Route One would have. So again, um, I don't know if we want to limit it just to downtown, um, if that's?
Here's my, I'm sorry to interrupt. Here's my question then, because right now the sentence reads, "enhance the town's economic infrastructure and downtown vitality." If we just slashed downtown vitality, does it in any way change anything? Because the leadership of this committee will be tasked by its, by us basically to say, so you exist, you can look at the entire town, but right now your focus is downtown. Does the downtown have to be in the charter, or if we slash it out, can we not through our guidance basically lead the downtown?
Yep.
That make sense?
Yeah, the direction will be coming from us anyway. The point was to try to not to, um, tie our hands here. Um, but as Dick had said, to give it a focus. You, you don't want to solve everything because then you won't solve anything, so. But it is coming from us, so we would be giving them the direction. So you could do either. You could take it out or you, or you could leave it in. Again, the direction is going to come from the board.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's something we need to talk about at length, which is why sometimes I feel like if we just cross that out, since we're going to be giving them the guidance, it'll change absolutely nothing with what they actually do, but maybe it clears it up for, for other people. I appreciate the discussion we had about, uh, the economic infrastructure and a better understanding of that from my part. In the same way, I would just ask at the end of that charter paragraph, it says, "and improving the quality of downtown Topsfield." Could I ask for some definitions, if you would, of what we mean by quality of downtown Topsfield?
I mean, I didn't create this term, but I would guess it would be fewer vacancies and buildings in better shape or parking lots that didn't have poles that went all the way to, you know, the submarine. Uh, those would be the top of minds.
There was an entire list, um, Dick, that I, I don't have right at my fingertips here, but that came out of the strategic plan, all the points that Marshall mentioned, as well as, um, events going on in downtown for families to be able to get together, um, to have tables and chairs and places to sit and gather, um, flowers, um, you know, ambient lighting. Uh, there are a number of things that would make it a more, um, cozy and inviting place to go shop and eat and, and, you know, visit with friends and family. So there are a lot of things that go into the quality of a downtown. And again, initiatives that would move that forward would be coming from the board and Kevin. And we don't want to list them specifically now because we don't exactly know what they might be or what opportunities or grants may come up that, you know, cause us to focus on one area versus another.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, the way I almost heard it, uh, I could somewhat replace the word with quality with overall, with the, uh, overall appearance of the downtown Topsfield.
It's more than just appearance, though. It's, it's activity. It's, it's vitality. It's not just how it looks, it's what it actually does.
And what it offers.
Well, we already enhanced the, the, uh, economic infrastructure. That's some of these quote offerings in that. Okay. I'm just trying to understand on my side.
I don't think, I don't think an event would be economic infrastructure, but that would be part of quality and it wouldn't be appearance. So that's why I think quality is all encompassing.
Great, thank you. Um, so there was a, a lot of, early on, John, you mentioned the fact that we, this is clearly a, an open process. My suggestion is, under the authority and responsibilities, that the second paragraph simply, instead of this kind of funny wording that it has, simply says, "as a public body, the ECDC shall meet in accordance with the open meeting law and reference MGL 30A 18 through 25 in open session according to a schedule." Uh, I, I think that's just, uh, makes it very clear that instead of trying to tie the fact that they're going to meet in Town Hall and whatever else, and now then they have to have instead. No, oh, we can't have a virtual meeting because it says we must meet at Town Hall and other public facility. They can't have a virtual meeting. I, I don't think that's, that's necessary. I would simply say that, again, that in accordance with the open meeting law. I'm willing to offer that, that text.
Yeah, I, I don't.
I mean, that's fine.
And Lynn, I would say as the chair's, um, lead on this committee, um, that, as the committee, as the board's lead on this committee, um, that, that would be a very reasonable thing to consider, um, adjusting. I mean, it doesn't change the intent. It makes it very.
Doesn't, it's fine. The wording is fine.
There, this is a public body, and I think Dick's point about we sort of call out OML, it just means that we're, um, expressly recognizing what we see as an obligation as well as an opportunity, so.
Yeah, Dick, could you send over just the wording that you have, right, exactly?
Yeah, just a textual thing, uh, under structure, I would ask that the, um, right at the very beginning of the sentence, we strike committee and parenthesis ECDC, ECDC. We already have that in the first paragraph or whatever else. So it simply reads, "ECDC shall be created by a majority vote."
Yeah, the last, you don't need that.
The last thing, the last thing I think is that you asked that we change it from seven members to nine members and that we put in six for the residents?
Yes.
Okay, then I, I make a motion that we approve the ECDC charter with, uh, the, uh, the, uh, three changes that I just mentioned. One of the textual changes under structure, the change, uh, reference to open meeting law and the change in the composition of the board from seven to nine.
Um, I was going to say, if we change that seven to nine, if we get seven, that's good. If we have space for more, that's great to be more inclusive. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, um, I'd like to just make one point. We have, um, under structure, um, this is just, uh, text smithing. Um, the ECDC committee, that's redundant. We could just say, the ECDC, we've already determined in the first line of the first paragraph, that refers to the Economic Community Development Committee. You just need to see, just needs to say, "the ECDC shall be created by."
Yeah, I think that's what Dick, your recommendation just was.
That's it, I was clarifying that. Yep, yep, good. Um, so we have a, um, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall? Mr. Marshall.
That's me getting an aye.
Or Mr. Marshall, aye and aye. No, I was.
Marshall gets two votes.
Yeah, he gets to vote twice.
His dog gets one. I didn't hear the box. It doesn't count. Mr. Jackson. Ms. Bermudas.
Aye.
Mr. Spencer, aye, passed unanimously. Thank you all very much on that. And we go on now to. Contract approval. This is regarding the fiber optic network. Kevin, I'll pass this to you and Donna.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief on this only because we spent some time on it on Monday. But this is the continuation of the conversation we had around the fiber optic network. And the opportunity to build this in the town based on very recent authorization. Or confirmation from the state to use CARES funds to provide, to allow this project to move forward. And we've been moving. We do need to spend the funds by the end of this calendar year, so December thirty first. And so we've been working very hard, Donna, especially. Since we found out last week and since Monday to ensure that we have updates in the contract. As well as answers to some of the questions that were posed during the last meeting. So I will. Maybe take a step back. Donna, if you have anything you'd like to add, please feel free and obviously open up to the board.
Thank you. So they revised the contract, which I believe you all have saying, so there are some. Key points. They've added remote town facilities, six town facilities. So they've added some information here. They have assured us that to the best of their knowledge, they will do their best to get it done by the end of December. The product, if we are able to and we get a vote of the board, they would be able to order it. Takes twelve weeks to get the. Materials. So we're running up against a clock as usual. And they, what it would save us are presently right now. We're spending a total of close to $20,000 on internet for the, for every individual building. And what this would do is it would take our costs down to roughly $10,000 for internet. And that would be just a backup. To have at the police station and a town hall. And that's their recommendation at this point. The project cost is eighty four thousand three hundred and twenty seven. Which is up from the last one a little bit, just to add and to tweak as they, as you discussed at the last meeting, they took that into consideration and it was tweaked. And the annual maintenance fee is $3,850 a year, which would be three hundred and twenty.
Say that again. Whoops.
For what?
How much was the maintenance?
Three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars annually with a monthly charge of $320.83. I believe strongly that the town hall maintenance budget can sustain that from. December, January until the next fiscal year. And obviously it'll be budget season. So that can be added in for the fiscal twenty two budget. But I don't believe that, that, that we don't have that in our budget to sustain it. From January till the end of June. So I think that they have come, they have. You know, done a good job on revising it and I'll swing it back to Kevin for additional information.
Donna, could I just ask, it looks like the document that's up on board docs still has on page one. The four town facilities versus the five or six that you mentioned. Is, is board docs just not current on this?
Apparently.
Okay, so there's an updated document with the.
Yeah, we have the three nineteen twenty twenty document. I'm going to guess there's one that has a.
There's one that's dated nine sixteen. I don't know what happened.
We don't have that now. Is that the only substantial change other than the ones that you mentioned?
Yeah, they changed it from, it was four facilities. They made it six. The design is not cascading. It's star point to point. And it says this design is for star. System for five remote town facilities to be connected to the town hall. Location. We can do that at a later time.
Donna, is the dollar amount increased then that we're approving to eighty four?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, because this document has the old dollar amount. So I don't know if that dollar amount needs to be in the motion.
Yes. So it would be eighty four thousand three hundred and twenty seven. My apologies. Must be a crossing there.
And again, why was the, why was the increase there, Donna?
Because they changed their design to. They changed the design a little bit.
Let me, let me, let me grab that. So one of the things that when I talked with Brian, who was on the phone Monday. And Rod, who's, who's working with us on this, one of the things that we're trying to get a good handle on it. Process wise, it does typically happen shortly after you go to contract, we whiteboard it and we kind of draw out, literally draw out. Where different types of connections are. But one of the things I've emphasized is the, is the reliability of the network. So there's different designs. A fiber network can have. It's a loop. It's a point to point. It's a cascading star, I think is one of, or cascading star. There's different types of designs and certain tweaks that you can make to it. So based on our, our. Current conversations of priorities, they've built a dish, changes to the exact design, tweaks, call it. And the additional amount represents ultimately more reliability for the town.
And it didn't go to a ring, though. That's how you.
It is not currently a ring. Well, we're looking at doing it. So we formed a steering committee. So with, with the hope that if this is passed. Monday, we'll be meeting the steering committee made up of public safety, others in town who have experience with fiber. And we'll be going into the details of exactly what. Every last nuance of what this will look like. And that'll be the group that helps design it, but. Design the final details to it. It's still, I will say this. Because of the constraints and the time limitations, it's an amazing opportunity that we, everybody feels strongly we need to move forward with. But some of the processes is being. Crunched a little bit. And so there is the, the real possibility that. We might need to come back with a possible change order at some point. That's, you know, eyes wide open. We might discover along in the next few weeks that we, we, we want to do something additional. That's again, once, once. A very rare opportunity to do it. Let's take advantage of it and then we'll share that with you folks.
Kevin, the change orders are fine at this point. We need to get it right now. And it's not going to be the first time perhaps as you put this in and you have to make those changes. But it's really, really worth it to make sure that we do it in a good way.
Hundred percent. And that's why we're putting the steering committee together.
We ought, we ought to go into this with eyes wide open. This is dark fiber. So the, it is. January first, if it's done, we can't use it. We don't have the infrastructure at the other, at the ends of it, so to speak, to interface and things like that. That's a separate thing that we'd have to do. We could, we could start doing it once we know we're going to do this and have it in place in January. But this contract doesn't do that for us and that's okay. Can I just do the numbers real quick, Donna? You, you, what I thought was most valuable. Was that they came back and gave us some money dollars. Are you, you, you came up with what our cousin. Current costs are. And then this, this other part. Roughly, I, I heard something about twenty K is what we're spending now. It would go down to ten K, but that we would add about four K in maintenance for a net savings of six K, order of magnitude. Is that it?
Yes.
Thank you. Excellent.
I would also, but one caveat is, is during the design, if it becomes a ring, for, for example, if it's, if you find a way to do a ring. Those, those potential costs on additional lines. We could see a savings up to fifteen thousand, I believe, the initial projections at this point. Best case scenario, it's higher than six, but. I think right now we're projecting the minimum amount of savings annually around $6,000.
Okay, could I, could I ask for clarification then? Donna, when you said twenty thousand per building.
No, no, no. Twenty per town. So that includes all the buildings on what everybody is spending. Internet and this, and I will say that it does not, of course, we're not going to do anything to the cable. Television that is housed here. Those internets, I mean, there will, that still has to remain.
Yeah.
Okay. And is that thirty eight fifty for maintenance included in the eighty four thousand three twenty seven?
No, it is a maintenance agreement that we would have after the, that they would help maintain it after. After it's installed or something happened to it, you know, like everything, you have a maintenance agreement after it's installed to take care of something that happens. Because I don't know anything about fiber optics. They would come in and fix it.
Okay, thank you.
Donna's selling herself short. She knows quite a bit. I, I would say though, that that's a separate contract vice chair as well, for what it's worth. So what's in front of you today is the first capital investment that's needed with the infrastructure.
But it's that money that allows us to get on the phone and say, a tree just went through our fiber. It needs to be repaired. And they will in forty eight hours get it fixed for us without additional cost. That we have a number to call and they will take care of it. I think they said four hours, whatever. That's, that's what the thirty eight is largely for.
Just like we have maintenance agreements for most everything we have in town. That's, it's just, and I do believe that Debbie just put up on board docs the revised documents.
Right.
The grant that we got was for eighty thousand, Kevin, for this, for the fiber loop? Do we have the additional forty three hundred in the budget somewhere?
So the CARES money is the grant for five hundred and eighty four thousand. And this would be one of the many items that the state has said is eligible for CARES money. It's not connected to a dollar amount. It's connected to the type of, of what we're doing. So.
Oh, okay. I understood there was a separate grant that we got awarded the eighty thousand for this fiber loop. No, we just got approval to take it out of the CARES money.
Well, which is, it was a significant step, which was pretty big and.
Okay, thank you.
I think this is just an incredible opportunity. From what I know. This is one of those things that in five years, we may look back on and say, what an incredibly smart move because. Increased bandwidth is always in demand one way or another. And it'll improve, most importantly, in my mind. It'll improve our security because any computer at any of these sites that currently has separate network access. Because of the speed, it can come into one pipe at the town hall where we could put some, one point, one cost. Straightforward hardcore security in any other of the other places, it will be just as if it was coming in straight to them. So. We could save ourselves a lot of money on that going forward. So I'd like to have a motion if it's time.
Discussion, can I continue to discuss for a second, John?
Yep.
So from reading it the other night, the indication is that what we get is a bundle of twelve fibers. In this network, this is twelve to each location, essentially twelve fibers. The way I read that would be that we have twelve pathways to pass data. One of them, the one that we're interested now is for our network, our computer network purposes. I'm gathering that we have therefore eleven other pathways available. Highways, if you would, to pass information. And the reason I bring it up now is because I think we're looking at our telephone systems. And the question I have rhetorically, but we need to ask them if, and, and our telephone, if we're going to go out to. To bid on the telephones, if in fact, we could use one of those quote fiber pairs. One, one of those fibers to link a, a phone system. Throughout the town with, with one, with one exchange, so to speak, or one, one, one central hub. So could we please put that on the table? If that's the case, if we're going to have the answer on Monday, just so we all know. If that's part of what might be available and if it is, should we be considering it?
So we are actually with our phone purchase are going to be going IP based. And so by doing so. I did, we did not mention any savings in phone lines as a result of that. So. We're going to be with the phone project, which is separate. We'll be recognizing significant savings on the phones because they won't require the.
I, I, I have your idea that we're moving along and we're going to make other changes in that. What I'm saying is that if this is in place. And available and then some pathways available in it because there's some additional ones that we don't use. Could we be considering a telephone network than we've thought about before?
Dick, can I, can I speak? Because I know something about this from a technical point of view. VoIP systems are becoming very popular. All the major corporations have them. They can save a tremendous amount of money. They provide a tremendous amount of security. Flexibility and all those sorts of things. I think it is absolutely, live it this way. Yes, we absolutely should. And when we talk to a security consultant, they're very familiar with that too. And will be able to help guide us if we choose to go that way. I can't not imagine that we wouldn't do it because of all the benefits and dramatic cost saving.
So we've had the conversation with, with the company and they, we talked about what types of savings we'd realize. And they asked about our phone system and that this phone system would be part of, could be part of this fiber network. Donna, make sure I'm saying the right things.
Yep.
Good. That's what I heard. All right.
So yes. It could support a phone system. What we're getting, we're getting it for the purposes of networking our computers. But it could be used for our phone system. And so do not sign any contracts for a new phone system until we. Good. Thank you very much. That's it. You're on.
Okay, great. Thanks, Dick. Yeah, I appreciate that. Are we ready to take a vote on this? Okay, I'm going to take a roll call vote. Mr. Gant.
Do we have a motion? Okay.
Yep. Do we have a motion?
I don't think we ever, we haven't did a motion.
We have, we need a motion. I motion to approve a contract between the town of Topsfield and Comtrack Corporation. From Boxwell, Massachusetts for the design and installation of a fiber municipal area network. To facilitate the interconnection of town facilities in an amount not to exceed eighty four thousand three hundred and twenty seven dollars.
Second.
I'm going to go Doc for a bit.
Second, okay. Dick, just before you go, can we take a vote? Dick, can you, okay, Dick votes yes. Mr. Hook, Marshall.
Aye.
Bermudas.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
I'm into me, but you're more important.
Mr. Spencer, aye, passed unanimously. Excellent. Thank you very much on that.
Thank you all. Thank you, Donna, for all your work on that.
Yeah, Donna, thank you. And I hope you get some benefit out of this because it ultimately will be easier, safer and less expensive to manage. So. May it make your life more straightforward.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to CARES Act funds retrofit purpose laptops. Kevin, I'm going to turn this to you.
So additionally to the, the contract we just voted on, one of the items which is eligible for funding is. Municipal technology investments such as laptops, which will allow us to move pretty nimbly in the event that this fall, which. It's a reality that we might be faced with some, some tough times with COVID, that we'll be able to work remotely. And have the tools necessary to do that successfully. And so. Donna reached out to the, all the staff here in the department heads related to technology needs. And specifically starting with laptops, which obviously are plug and play. You can pull it with you and bring it home and be able to. Log in and, and still perform your duties for the town. And so. The list of, I think, Donna, was it nineteen or did we get up to over the twenty mark? Might have been twenty eight?
Only sixteen.
Sixteen, sixteen. So sixteen laptops are, was what we determined was, was necessary to make sure everyone had the tools necessary. Event we go over. And Donna, I will turn it over to you.
So I'm going to rephrase or there, I am purchased our, I, this contract before you was for sixteen of them. There are two that the police station are going to procure on their own because they have so many special things that I can't even imagine. So they are going under a different purchasing. But the ones that I have presented, I went to retrofit, which is our server maintainer, maintain, maintenance. People who do a great job of procuring. All of our equipment, they did the servers and they do our, all of our PCs and our monitors. So they quoted the, they quoted it. Out. And so I have two that are for accounting people that need keyboards on the right hand side. So those two computers come to three thousand thirty five dollars and forty eight cents. And then fourteen Dell latitudes that are just fourteen inch. And they are at twenty one thousand four hundred and ninety nine dollars and ninety four cents. And then for software for all of them, that equals five thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty eight cents. And so the whole total comes to twenty nine thousand nine hundred and forty eight dollars and seventy cents. Therefore, I respectfully request that. Approval be given for this purchase. I can tell you all the people that have, that feel that. There, it will make their lives easier at home and to work remotely. lives easier at home and to work remotely, um, I think it's a, a great use of the CARES funds. Um, they will be inventoried, they will be tracked, um, in the event of any employees leaving, obviously they will be brought back and scrubbed and be given to the next person. Um, so there will be, um, inventory through our, um, IT group, and I think that's about all I got to say.
Great, thank you, Donna. So they do remain the property of the town very clearly?
Clearly.
Yep, no, I just, that's good, I think that's important and, uh, I appreciate that. Any other questions? Hearing none, would someone like to make a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of laptops for town hall staff to be paid out of the CARES Act funds that the town received from the state due to COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you, uh, Select Board Member Silver Tongue.
Thank you. Second.
Uh, we have a second from Dick, which is great. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote, Mr. Muddas?
Aye.
Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Spencer, aye, passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
On to goals and objectives.
Good job, Donna.
Yeah, that's great, Donna, I really appreciate that, and I'm delighted that if it will make life easier and give us a better way to sort of turn on a dime, if we, I can't imagine we're not going to end up having to lock down or at least shut down more and go more remote as time goes on, so, um, that's great. Um, we have the town goals and objectives, and given the late hour, what I'm going to ask is that, um, if we would look through these, I know David Larson put a couple in, my look at his, were they, with the possible exception of one, pretty much mapped on to ones we already have. But I would ask us as preparation for the next time, because this is going to be a somewhat longer, um, discussion, and it's not urgent, it's important, but it's not urgent. Let's, if we each could come up with kind of, what's your top five or six? Um, so that we can kind of see, what I'm thinking is, if we all agree on two or three of them, or there's very strong consensus, and we realize we're talking about the same thing, we kind of set those aside, they'll be done more quickly if we've done that thinking in advance, and then focus on, do we want to have more, and if so, which ones they might be? Um, I also look at this as a process of the conversation keeps us thinking about where we're going, how we're serving the town, and that, uh, there are likely to be some things that will not be in this year's list, because we shouldn't make everything a priority, um, but will remain part of our, um, looking at future years and will evolve. So, um, with your permission, I would like to ask you to do that, come prepared. I will ask if before the next meeting, um, Kevin, I don't know if we have time in our agenda, but if we can do that on the 24th, what I would like to do is, um, ask if prior to that, um, if we could send our preferences, our priorities to, um, uh, to Donna and have them sent out in rank order, so we can kind of see where we're at, so.
How about Debbie?
How about Debbie? How is that? You, you busy, Donna? Sorry about that. Debbie disappeared from my screen for a moment. You're absolutely right, I'm having a great time with names today.
He's listening, she's listening.
If we could do that and put them in your rank order, so that if it's clear, you know, my number two, but it matches two, three, two or three other people's number one, then clearly we're going to move forward in that. Does that seem like a reasonable way to go?
Yes.
The only thing I'd add to that, John, is it seems like there are a number of these that actually could be combined.
Another thing I'd ask, if we could do that, yeah, if you prepare, and so in addition to putting your, maybe before that, but I see these two as being the same and combining them, that would be very helpful. Each of us look at them and see where they might be combined. Um, we need to remember, these are not goals in the form of objectives that we seek to attain necessarily this year, these are designed to guide our thinking. So when we have efforts that are afoot, we know where we are trying to help the town go in the longer term, and that, um, these also help citizens understand how we're thinking. If they come to us and say, you know, you're crazy to do those, or they do this and so on, it's our job to listen and pay attention. As I always say, if you don't like the job we're doing, for Pete's sakes, don't vote for us. So, um, this is our way of staying accountable to the town and keeping them aware of how we're thinking.
An easy feat to say, John, you just converted in again.
Yeah, I know, yeah, good luck then, there you go.
And to somewhat clarify the, the intent of this, we've talked about this in the past, in past year, year, the previous ones that we did, that this is the, these are the goals of the Board of Selectmen, and they.
No, I, well, yeah, by the Board of Selectmen, on behalf of the town, I'm calling them town.
The Board of Selectmen's goals, there are perhaps other goals that we will pass on specifically that are not part of our goals to Kevin Hartunian as our town administrator. And, uh, I'm going to offer two of them, just as, as an example of the kinds of things that we might pass on, because we've been talking about them. But one of them is to resolve access and maintenance to copper mine development. We know that we, we don't have a full answer for that yet, and it's something that Board of Selectmen is not setting as a goal, but we'll be passing on to Kevin to do. And another one from getting ready for our budget this year was the reminder, and the FinCom reminded us last year also, that we need to do something about the pay grid. Uh, so those are the kinds of things that are separate from the goals that we do. If everybody agrees, I'm not putting those down as my goals, but I will put them down when it comes to time to talk with our town administrators, things that need to be done.
Yeah, I, I would support that entirely, Dick. I think the town administrator goals is another conversation that we do need to have. I think the town goals need to be stated first, and, um, when I think of the town goals rather than Select Board goals, I want them to be perceived, and maybe it's just semantics, with them be perceived as things that are in the best interest of the entire town, not just the board. To me, that's just semantics, but those are the longer term things that kind of say, we're looking down the road to resolve these things. The objectives that may be contained within those, or as you've suggested, copper mine road is unlikely to be a sub-objective of one of the town goals, but that would be a very appropriate thing to, um, ask our town administrator to consider. So we will have a separate and expansive conversation about the town administrators going forward. Right now, he's been so busy, frankly, I, along with most of us, haven't been too worried about it, but it's in the future.
Well, I agree with almost everything either one of you say, but just because the Board of Selectmen puts together a list of goals and objectives, doesn't mean that the town government is going to stop functioning. Every one of you guys sitting at, looking at that screen have your daily jobs to do, and regardless of what we say we're going to do for goals and objectives.
Yep.
Because our goals and objectives could last over a period of two years, or three years, or four years. So.
Yeah.
Life goes, life goes on.
Yeah, now, these are, these are designed to be signs in the sky, um, that we can point to and say, this is where we think the town ought to go. And, um, obviously we will, when we present these after reaching some kind of consensus, we will invite townsfolk to comment on them, and, um, as we go forward, this has been a tough time during COVID, but as we're going forward, it will be nice to figure out a mechanism by which we can engage the town people, once they kind of see the shape that these are taking, to bring ideas. Right now, the town consists of David Larson, who was the only one on the board, we didn't specifically solicit it, David being David, has joined us, which is fine. Um, but we're going to want to be sure that we go forward, um, make sure this is kind of the town looking ahead to where they want to go. Um, and that way, you know, frankly, they should be able to ask us and say, do you believe in downtown revitalization? And if a candidate says no, or doesn't give an effective answer, if you like that direction, you vote for the candidates that are going to try and help move us that way. Um, not that I think that's a controversial one, but anyway, that all said, I would like to postpone that discussion further and request that maybe the same deadline as the, um, other things that we're, we're putting in, the, um, what's the other one we have coming up for? Oh, those are, um, suggestions for, which was it? The?
Traffic advisory?
Yes, thank you, that we put that, um, and make those go on the 21st or the 20th, is it, on Monday?
Uh, 21st at noon time.
21st at noon time, so, um, and any thoughts you have? Dick, I would certainly entertain, if you wish, as a separate submission, but we will not be discussing immediately. If just to get it out, there are things that you think might be town administrator related, you can certainly put them on, and we'll be starting to collect those going forward. But, um, the most important thing we want to do is focus on the overarching goals and so on, and we, as you've seen, they're pretty broad and so on, and will take a long time, most of them. So that said, um, everybody okay with that? I'm going to move on to the last mo, oh, no, excuse me, we have exec, we're going to do executive session minutes in executive session at the next session, so given that it is 6:22 right now.
Kevin had something?
Something you want to close with?
Just very quickly, I just wanted, there's a number of department heads on this call, uh, numbered staff, um, there's a lot going on right now, we talked a little bit about that on Monday. I just want to thank everybody for taking the time tonight, uh, to be here on this call, to help us work through some of the items we discussed. It's a team effort, and all this that we're putting in front of you, it takes the whole village to get there, and I just want to say thank you to everybody, and the support from the Select Board, obviously.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that very much, and I've recognized a few folks and so on. Um, we can't run the town without people who help us.
Kevin and I get to do this again in, uh, 46 minutes when we have a cable advisory meeting.
There you go, there you go. So anyway, with that, I'll accept, um, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Got a second?
Second.
We have a motion second, uh, take a roll call vote, uh, Mr. Muddas?
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Hook?
Aye.
And Mr. Spencer, aye, and with that, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you all very much.